Ask them why they made the decisions that they've made in regards to that. Also, I think everybody's aware that the ATSDR is coming into the community. They sent postcards out to 2,000 residents asking for people who are interested to sign up. I believe they're having nine, they're having four or five sessions with the public. They're limiting that to about nine people per session. They don't believe they need a volume of people. This is in my brief conversation with them. Again, you're welcome to call them as well too. In my brief conversations with them, they don't need a large volume of people. They just need people to talk to and they can assess it based on the conditions, not just the number of people who are reaching out to them. I think that's all I have in regards to this.
Just to follow up, I'm highly disappointed in finding out at such short notice that this was coming down. I would have to assume that this maintenance, Mr. Nelly could probably enlighten us, something that had to be planned for some time and just didn't pop up today that all of a sudden they need maintenance or something like that.
I found out before five o'clock when I actually called the DEP just to get an update if there's anything interesting I should know about. And that's when I was called back and told, that is correct. They did know and they were actually looking at the weather, looking for the high pressure system, which is what you want. When the low pressure system comes in, there will be that release of gas due to less pressure on the landfill. But the pieces that they are putting in have been in fabrication for some time. They're putting in some new stainless steel they used a, I think it's a three or four gauge when they first put the entry system up. They're going to a much higher quality that's typical of petrochemical field. And it's at the site today, I was at the site mayor before I came here. So that took some time to fabricate. So that is correct, that there was plans for this product for some time and they were gauging the weather patterns. My personal opinion, they should have alerted Chris and yourself and the council just what they hadn't planned and they were waiting for the timing.
Yeah, whether it's needed or not, you know, I can assume it probably is, I'm not the expert in that, but...
Yeah, it's definitely needed. The stainless steel they have is, if you've been in the site with me, it's inferior and it's good. What they're doing is needed, it's appropriate, it's good they're doing it. And it's good there's a high pressure system here. And it's better doing it now rather than needing to be done because of a breakdown.
All that might be true, it's just...
What they need to communicate with you is what is surprising.
Mr. Nelly, I'm sorry, real quick, but the other thing is that once again, we asked the DEP to attend tonight's meeting to answer your questions directly. Their response was they're not sitting here.
And I'd also like to point out that immediately this afternoon, we planned just for any contingency with the Respite Center, Chris Rass volunteered to take two nights immediately and within minutes, two other employees volunteered to wear night as well. So, you know, again, I think it shows the concern and it followed up that township's habit and making sure that we can make everything as comfortable as possible while there's some going on in the February. Anything else in the council?
Just out of curiosity, Bob, I mean, obviously, it appears that the reason why this happened is through the corrosive nature of the gases that are coming out. I mean, this isn't something that happened overnight.
No, it was predictive.
Okay. Did they give you any sort of a reason why they couldn't provide this information? Because as you said, they're fabricating other metals right now to put in that place. Did they give any reason why at this point, they couldn't give us advanced notification, something that they knew would advance for such a long period of time?
They did not give me a reason why and my understanding is that, my comment was it would have been good to give us some notice so we can prepare. And there was nothing on their end of the phone.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the other council?
The gate is closed and locked as of 5:30. Next is going to be the opening of the public portion. We'd like to reiterate, as we have started doing in past meetings because of the volume of members in the public, that everyone's comments will be limited to three minutes with one appearance per individual during the public session. The first one will go an hour and then the second one will go half an hour. So at this point in time, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dennis Wyon, Holly Drive, Suckasona. I have three questions I'd like to ask and then I have a comment to make. I appreciate it. I just used my three minutes to ask real questions and you can answer them after my three minutes. Tonight's agenda, page 21, you have Wellfleet. And I was just wondering, does this mean this permitting extension means they're actually going to build something? Or is this just more of, you know, waiting? And similarly, there was one time a rumor they were going to sell that property. And if they did, with the obligation to complete the lower income housing on Mary Louise, go with such a sale, how can you enforce that? Second question, Hillside Drainage, Hillside's a county road, we're doing drainage. Question is, is that a county responsibility? Check by air ram. Lastly, page 45, you're buying a pumper and you're giving a $200,000 advance payment. The pumper is to be due to be delivered in about a year. It apparently is at least somewhat custom as there is about $85,000 worth of options. My question is, is this contract going to be bonded? And so you have somebody in case they disappear with your $200,000 and the truck never comes? That's my question. My comments relate to Fennmore. I think I was here the night when the council first became aware of this, the ask over. And I know you were concerned that, and I think you and the residents have done a tremendous job of trying to do the best you can with this state green fiasco, which basically you have no control over and I understand that. All you can do is beg and ask and try to get people to respond and do what you wanted to do. I'm not directly impacted, I don't get smells, I didn't have the trucks. But I certainly understand and am empathize with those who did have to put up with this mess. And I know that you're ongoing and here again, you're getting surprised again tonight. I think this whole thing was a surprise from day one. Nobody had any indication, it was very short notice and all of a sudden trucks roll. Whereas the trucks, I think in my opinion, were not nearly as bad as this poisonous gas if there had been a mini from this thing. You have no say about the truck route, they didn't consult with you. You tried to get an alert truck route, they dragged your feet forever for permitting process. You filed a suit to shut it down, the judge wouldn't go along. And you tried to get a bitter administrative law judge to at least enforce the terms and conditions of the contract, which you were told only green stuff was going to come in there. And that didn't happen. You were told a lot of other things that turned out to be, I guess you'd say, not the way things resulted. You go from respite centers, you install monitors, you've operated a website. Finally, to get it shut down, you got an act in the legislature. The DEP still now won't disclose what's in there, they won't let you figure out what's in there. And the stack of measures, nobody seems to be knowing for sure what's coming out of that. And I think, you know, this again, I don't hold you responsible, I think you've done everything, you've done a marvelous job trying to be effective and help the residents. And I just think, what would have happened if you wouldn't have been here and done all the stuff you did and the residents hadn't done all the stuff you did? My decision is to be dumb and stuff up there. So I appreciate your efforts and hard to think of what else you could have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want those questions answered?
Yeah.
I'll try to answer the questions. Now, I do have some forms here tonight that if we get into an issue where I cannot answer a question tonight, not into positive dialogue, I'll ask people to write their questions and I'll get back to them shortly after that. But to answer your question, because I think they're appropriate, Wellfleet does this every two years. And the reason they do this is because they also have state permits. And if they do not have a water allocation, then they jeopardize their state permits. I can tell you that there has been some activity on this site in interest to pursue it. Otherwise, we would not be continuing, or I would not be recommending that we continue to approve these. Drainage on Hillside, I believe it's North Hillside.
Oh, okay.
North Hillside is a township, bro.
That's right. Okay.
And then what was it?
Are you going to bond or pump it?
Oh, the pumper. Yes, the pumper, it is bonded.
Okay. Does it sure do you know there's an advance payment?
Yes.
Okay. The premium went up?
The premium went up.
Because of the advance payment?
No, it did not go up.
But they do know it and you got it right.
You got it.
Otherwise, they tend to lose a lot. Thank you.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Anybody else in the public push computer, please raise your hand.
Could you address Mary Louise?
Could I address Mary Louise?
Yes. Mr. Wong, you asked a question about Mary Louise.
About whether the contract, if they sold it, would include a provision to do the lower income housing on Mary Louise, which I understand is...
That is, that's true. Thank you very much. Yes, it would continue to do that even with the sale. Anybody else in the public push computer, please raise your hand in the back.
Melissa Atkinson, six, Justin, please. I have a, my first question is about the ATSDR, the postcard. I know I'd sent a couple of emails to you, Jim, and then Chris, I included you in on it. Because I'd called a couple of times and I know it's posted on our website. I know they're trying to vote, they're trying to have the focus groups and I know they can't take a lot of people at these focus groups. But the first part of it says is if you're interested in sharing your concerns and/or being considered for participation in small group community sessions. So this was really a way, an outreach to, I believe, to all the residents of Roxbury to have this information on the postcard so that if people chose to call, they could call. I did, like I said, I called a couple of times. I gave that suggestion to them, you know, I told them about the system we have, you all have with the capability to send it out to all residents. And I'm just curious, Jim, I think you misunderstood my email and then I clarified it and from Friday, I didn't hear back from you or Chris. And I sent, reforwarded it yesterday and I sent another email today. So it's great that it was posted on the website, but people that don't have access to a computer or whatnot, why wouldn't you do a phone blast to alert all residents to this number so that they could call? That's my first question.
Yeah, because I have had conversations and I understand why you may want to do that. But again, in conversation with the ATSDR, they don't need a lot of responses to determine what the health effects are. They can take it with the people that they've gotten so far. They got to 2,000 postcards that they sent and us posting it on our website and on Facebook was sufficient to get the number of people they need to get the information. Again, it's not where they're trying to get everybody, everybody calling in and saying, "I'm having issues." They, what they want is people to come in and speak to them about what their issues are and they can determine it. And that's only one aspect of it. The other aspect is that they have all the monitoring information, they have all of our health, all of our health data from all of the cases that were given. It's one part in a comprehensive study.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you.
That's fine, I appreciate you.
Because she, when I spoke with Sylvia the first time and Jill the second time, it's for anybody to call that's interested in sharing their concerns. It doesn't just discriminate for people that live within one mile. They're trying to get a cross-section of people. And I think the best way to get a cross-section of this community that is so large is to have given this information to all residents. Information meaning a number to call and leave it up to them if they want to call or not. I know that Karen Carlson, the principal at Jefferson Elementary School, she sent it out. To me, it's just, and I wrote this in my email, and Bob, this is to you, when you got a little bit upset with Dan Massey the last time that you don't, what, we don't think you're doing enough. Yeah, why not take this extra measure to make a phone blast, a blast phone call? Why not? Why not? And then if they can't handle the number of calls, they can take the messages, record the messages, people can leave the areas that they're living in and so forth.
Once again, Melissa, and I'll leave it at this, because this is an ATSDR, this is their study, they're the ones who set the mile limit, they're the ones who sent out to 2,000. They believe, and I emailed to another resident, this effect based on the conversation and email that I got, that they believe the 2,000 residents they sent it to will be a sufficient cross-study, a cross-section for the study that they need to do.
Okay. She welcomed the working with, and I sent this in my email to the town council about using your phone system to send out certain messages. So I just, I, we got, we're getting mixed messages then. But I don't appreciate not, return email from you, the township manager that gets paid.
And over the weekend, I didn't see him.
It's from Friday and I reforwarded it yesterday and I spent time typing a separate email today.
I did see yours this afternoon and I had not had the chance to respond to it. Thank you, Melissa.
My second question is...
Time is up, but we'll have to, and I did stop when Mr. Rass was discussing this book. So we can take it in the next session. Anybody else in the public push computer, please raise your hand? Yes, sir.
Officer Dean, Main Street, Ledwin. I gotta disagree with this gentleman back here about you guys doing the best you can. Not at all. Not even, not even 1% correct. I understand you got a big ball of wax and are trying to smooth out, but do the best you can? It's not just me knowing that. You know you're not doing the best you can. Especially the ones that break bread with Mr. Christie. Come on, guys, let's do it. It's all done with smoke and mirrors, but we see through it, okay? A lot of people don't. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public push computer, please raise your hand in the back?
Marguerite Guardiello, 17 Lincoln Drive. So I just want to get this clear. The DEP is saying that they're going to close off the monitors and we're not going to have any record of how much exposure will be going on for these days?
No, no, the monitors are staying on.
I'm sorry?
Monitors are staying on.
The monitors are staying on?
They don't work anyway.
Yeah, well, they haven't been working. So what the problem here is, we're going to be excessively exposed. I was speaking with Karen Kirk from, with Governor Christie and she told me that they were basically almost done with the major work that would be exposing us. Because when they first introduced this to us, they said that at some point, their monitors will be shut down and they have to do work. And we've been watching it carefully, wanting to make sure that everything was working before they did expose us to this. I mean, it's really critical and ridiculous that you're going to say, "Okay, people, we're going to really have to be ready for this next thing, get your evacuation ready." I mean, we're all just sitting here saying, "Okay, what are you going to do?" You know, I think we should call the EPA and check and make sure that there's something should be done, they should work slower, or they should do something different. We just can't sit here, look what they did to us. They really have not had any control and now we're going to let them do this with less control. So I would be looking into something different. I don't think we should accept this. I think we should check into the EPA and some other government. I mean, really, how could you expose us to all this? How could they? You know, I was in my yard last week, Saturday. You hear my voice? I'm telling you, I really did get infected. I was in my yard. I'm getting upset. But I was in the yard and it was like a cloud. I pulled this on my husband, I were outside, we see this white cloud and it comes down all the trees. I mean, it was really different looking. And he saw it too, I threw something at my eyes for a minute. And I noticed the day, during the day, my voice kept getting resting, resting and it really hasn't gone away. So I'm concerned, I don't know what it was, but today, we find out that we're just, oh god, chemical clouds all over, all over the mountain. So I mean, those two things together really am me concerned.
Did you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you call anybody in the room?
Oh, yes. I called the one, I called up early in the morning, there was some kind of funny uncomfortable feeling in the yard. And I called up the one and then again, when I felt that something happened, I called up the one again and I did not call the normal number, I called emergency. And I said, "Look, you know why?" I said, "Something's happening here." I said, "I think you should get down there and find out if something's happening on the landfill." "Oh, I can't do that because, you know, we only take complaints. We'll call you back in two days." I said, "Do you mean to tell me I'm pulling an emergency number and you're going to call me back in two days? Is this what we're going to have? Unfortunately, we're going to have complete exposure and all kinds of nonsense and no one taking care of anything." So we're not ready. We're not ready for that. So Carrie called me back the next morning and the DEP warning people call me back. And I explained to them that there has to be more control for an emergency and things like that. So that's it. I'm just in circles here, I can't believe that you guys are going to call the EPA, stop that type of thing. We can't have it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public push computer? Oh, Bob, I'm sorry.
Bombadaro's four and hour on Drive, Ledwin, New Jersey. Gentlemen, I have a great concern from this morning. There was tremendous clouds hovering over the landfill. And my question is, has anyone taken soil temperature tests? Is it possible that the landfill is on fire underneath? There's steam coming up from the landfill. Steam, steam, steam only creates by heat. Has anybody tested the temperature on the landfill?
Not that I'm aware of, Bob, but, you know, we can check into it.
I would appreciate it.
They actually do have temperature readings they've taken over time. And it's 120, 130 degrees. And I believe that the steam was that of the, just the evaporation, the moisture from the morning, like if you had a compost pile and you turned it over and you saw that steam, I believe that's what it was. But the highest I've ever seen leachate or landfill materials, about 140 degrees, and that was one of the big ones by the Giant Stadium. This landfill doesn't have anywhere near that temperature inside it. But I have not seen the data nor have, as we talked about.
Is the data available?
We have, we have not ourselves taken temperature readings, but they supposedly did.
Is it available anywhere that we can monitor it?
We can certainly ask the DEP for the data.
I would appreciate it, thank you. And I had a thought, but I lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public push computer? Yes.
Marie Felix, Conklin Road, Flanders, Port of Roxbury. Last council meeting, I mentioned that we don't have monitors in the older section of that Oats Peak, like Conklin Road down towards the pond, just like Kennedy. Where you live, Marguerite, okay, and a couple... Lincoln Drive. We have no monitors. And I was told at ASTDR, when they come, they're going to do an assessment. So basically, I called, I told them about the health issues and they basically didn't want my address. They said because of freedom of information, if they were to receive my address, they would have to release it. So again, how are you going to determine, because of whether, you know, you're just saying, "Okay, we'll wait for their input," if they don't know my address, where I live, to determine whether we need monitors up in the older section?
I don't know how they're going to determine. This is perfect. If you want to fill that out, I can send it to the ATSDR and ask them directly.
Okay.
But I don't want to, I don't want to miss the communication, so I'm going to ask you to do that because this really is a question of...
Yeah, but because, Chris, you did tell me that they would determine if we needed monitors in our section. And we're, we're less than a mile, we're in a radius of maybe a half a mile.
You're now asking me how they're going to determine it?
No, I'm going to, I'm requesting from you. Okay, forget that. Why, why don't we have monitors where we are, since we're just less than a half a mile?
Okay, this has been explained before.
Go ahead.
By our, no, I'm not going to explain it again.
Okay, well, great.
It has been explained before by our, by our expert and they worked with the DOH and the DEP in determining where the monitors are going to be located. I will ask them again to put that in writing to you and we can send it to you.
Yeah, please, because as you know, winds drift different ways.
Do that for me, okay?
No problem.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public push computer? Yes, sir.
Kurt Keys, Landing, New Jersey, also past chief of Roxbury Fire Department and current president of the Port Morris Firemen's Association. I just want to thank all the councilmen, Chris Rass, Rick Blood, I don't know if you've got status updates on our firehouse. Concrete is poured, building is going up really nicely. Without your help, we wouldn't have been able to do that and we just wanted to say thank you very much. And I do have one other question.
What is the status of the proposed walking trails from the new Landing Paw Field Recreation Project that will connect through the area and who will maintain those trails?
Let Mr. Holland answer since you came back.
The Landing recreational facility will have a walking trail going around the entire perimeter of the facility. That is the only trail that's being proposed at this particular time. If there is other trails, Kurt, that you want us to look at from a recreational perspective, we will look at that. But right now, the only trail that's being proposed is we'll go around the circumference of the Landing Road Facility at this time.
I think there's some additional stuff.
In other space, we also talked about, if you're aware, that a lot of communities are working on trying to do a trail around the lake. And in other space, we've been talking about what kinds of things we could require to try to see if we can get a trail to go from Landing Road Recreation all the way down to some of the others we have. We just opened up the Ice Age Trail last week and it's done. But we'd love to see those all kind of connected as a kind of a bike and a walking path.
And I started running, so it's a great, great trails in this town.
So we're working hard on trying to see if we can get those all to connect. It'd be great if we could find a way to connect the Landing Road Recreation to the Lake of Patcon one and plus the one to our...
Is there a bit of discussion if it's...
No.
Yeah, we just cut a ribbon on the Ice Age Trail. It's really not handed officially yet. It's right off the ship before road. And that's about a mile and a half trail. Hopefully, the Landing train station is going to be brought up by some two buses in there. And hopefully, the trail from there to the port will come to fruition also. Thank you.
Any other council members? Yes, sir.
Chief Knight, Al.
Trump, Feden, Landing, New Jersey, Chief of Roxbury Company, Tim. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor of council, Mr. Rass and Mr. Blood for the work they helped us do on acquiring this new apparatus we're getting. We've spent nine, 10 months working on it. Mr. Blood was a big help, Mr. Rass was a big help. And I'd like to thank the councilman, Mr. Rass and Mr. Blood. I have one question. Can you tell us the status of the Landing Road Bridge replacement project?
Landing Bridge?
Landing Road.
Landing Road. Actually, my understanding right now, chief, is that if you're not familiar with the landing area, the Landing Road Bridge is currently...
I think he's familiar with the landing area.
No, he is, I'm talking to the general, I'm talking to the public in general. Thank you. To the public in general, if you're not familiar with the landing area and this long two-lane bridge that goes over that.
Over the tracks.
Over the railroad tracks. It's been in existence, I've seen photos all the way back to about 1860, even before cars. The bridge is in need of repair. The county has been working on this even before I got here. Their current plans are to redesign and finalize the design of the bridge in 2015. And in fact, they're supposed to be coming before council in the next three or four months to make a presentation to council in regards to the design of the bridge. At the same time, we're taking the opportunity to, let me finish that. With actual construction probably not being until two, they have right-of-way acquisition and they probably won't have construction until 2018. However, during that period of time, we have our planning department working with the Lake of Patcon Foundation is looking at a complete streetscaping entryway design into Landing, where you will come over the Landing Bridge and you will have a, you will have a very aesthetically pleasing area with, hopefully with ornamental lighting, some nice bollards, replace it in the fence. And we're working in partnership with the Landing, or excuse me, the Lake of Patcon Trust and it's going very successfully right now. So you actually may see improvements to the wall and the fence. Very shortly, we already have conversations with the county in regards to that, chief.
We discussed it at the master plan meeting just a couple of weeks ago. There was a plan on the table that I don't recall ever seeing with the whole redesign of that whole section. So I asked for new maps, but it looks like it's in a redesigned content.
About 14 years.
Yeah. Well, they say thing about Route 10. I have one down there. Anything else?
Nice. I think you took one of the questions.
Anybody else in the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, 15 year old, we're down in South of San. So for this shutdown that's going to happen tomorrow, that you got almost no notice of, but you've already told all of the township staff that they're on alert, correct? So for this shutdown that's going to happen tomorrow, that you got almost no notice of, but you've already told all of the township staff that they're on alert, correct?
Those people who volunteered to rest in Santa Ana.
Okay. So if it sounds like it's a bit of potential urgent emergency type status that you've set by doing that, why have you not then notified all of the Roxbury residents via your emergency notification that this is being shut down? And maybe they should also be on alert, the same as you've made your staff alert?
The DEP alerted the residents.
The DEP alerted the residents? How did they alert the residents?
They sent the emails, and it was there. And we asked them what they wanted to send.
DEP didn't send me an email?
We sent it out, correct. We asked the, the DEP sent out the information. We asked the DEP where they wanted to send it to, and they selected the group.
So they selected who they wanted to alert, but you selected to alert all of your staff? But can't you select to alert all of the Roxbury residents?
No, this was the DEP. Again, I appreciate your question, but the DEP sent out the alert. They sent out, they determined who the alerts should go to.
You're not going to notify all of the Roxbury residents via the emergency notification that they're going to shut that down?
We will continue to use the same system that we've been doing.
So the answer is no?
I'm just responding to your question.
Will you send it out by the emergency notification, by the phone requesting that you do? Will you do that?
The DEP's alerts would send out.
That's it?
Will, can you answer my question yes or no? Please. Can you please answer my question with a yes or no? Will you decide? Will you send out the emergency notification to all of the Roxbury residents, please?
If it's determined, if it's determined that an alert should be sent out because of the conditions, if they exist, under a notification...
No, no, not the conditions that it's going to be shut down.
Mr. Rass is answering your question. It's not going to go out townwide.
So you're not going to send an emergency notification that they're going to shut it down? You're not going to forewarn, you will not forewarn the residents? Mr. Blood, you will not do that?
We...
Do you only do what they tell you to do?
Ma'am?
That is absolutely absurd that you won't do that. You've alerted all of your staff, but you won't alert the residents. And the same with the ATSDR. You should send the same thing out to all of the residents. Whether the ATSDR wants to hear from them or not, it would be nice for you to notify all of the residents that they are coming to do this study, so they're aware of the seriousness of the nature that other agencies... I can't believe that you won't send either one of those out. That is absolutely absurd.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public push to hear? Unless you've already spoken.
No, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think there's two in here. Please, come on.
Michelle Stone for Irving Court. Who's the DEP alerted this small, the group?
I'm sorry, who?
You said the DEP alerted.
The DEP sent out the alert to the Fenimore user group. We gave them, we asked them who they wanted to send it to, and they said they wanted to send it to that group.
Okay, why am I not on there when the landfill's in my backyard?
That I have to check to make sure. I don't know why you would not be on there.
Well, did it go to all of Poets Peak?
It should have gone. Again, I will check and get back to you. My understanding, it was supposed to go to all of Poets Peak.
Chris, it's shutting down tomorrow. The landfill's in my backyard.
We got notified today. I think it's important, we'll follow up on the notification.
Stop it.
We can't.
Just send the damn alert out.
I think you've followed up on the, I got the notification.
Just send the alert out.
I'm not certain. I will have to check.
Well, who's in the small group? How do you, how do they determine that?
It's not a small group. Again, I don't actually send out the notifications. In fact, the person who usually sends out the notifications wasn't in. So we will follow up on the DEP's notification and to group that one out.
But why did I send it out?
Okay, well, I haven't been in that group from the beginning if there's been any alerts going out.
But you've been getting the alerts.
Yeah, I've been calling DEP since last August. I have a log of every time that I've smelled it, I've called. I've been coming to town council meetings, so I don't quite understand why I would be on there.
This is a legitimate point. I mean, you know, how is the... How is the engine DPD getting? Even, can we just go back to the engine DPD and just ask them? Exactly what I'm going to do. Yeah, just take a look. You know? This is where we don't get...
Would anybody else in the public push to hear on any issue? Yes, sir.
Mark Longo, Seven Pleasant Hill Road, South of Santa Ana. I'm not really sure where to start. I can't really say I know exactly what every one of you guys do, but I don't want to sound disrespectful. But with this whole notice thing, I don't understand how we find out about marching band down to South Jersey. We find about ball fields happening, anything and everything, but we can't find out about something like this. I agree with Brendan, I agree with everybody else. Two miles from the site, I think, as a crow flies, somebody let us know. We're on Pleasant Hill Road. I don't get affected every day. I'm at work, I work down at Ford Park. Saturday and Sunday, when I'm home and I'm in New York from seven in the morning until seven at night, I come inside, my eyes are burning, my head hurts, and I'm not sure what it is. My wife and my kids are outside during the day. And everybody else is. I don't know, how many of you guys live in town? You guys all live here, or show of hands?
Yeah, we all.
You're all, okay. Don't you guys, don't you feel this? Don't you see anything? Don't you get the symptoms? I understand you guys have a job to do. Everybody has a job to do. I got a job, this gentleman, everybody has a job to do, but I'm not saying you're not doing your job. I am. But with the people's health and what goes on and where they're at, I understand Christie butters everybody's. You know, where the bread gets buttered, I get it. He doesn't butter it here.
Yes, he does.
He doesn't? Nope. I know we need our roast fix every year, I know we need snowplow money, I know we need salt, I know, I get that stuff. But isn't this important to you guys?
Yes, it is very important.
But really, I mean, nothing else can be done, that's it. It's just what we get fed, and this is it. Here, eat this, eat this, it's good, it tastes good. And we just keep banging our heads against the wall, we're not getting anywhere.
Oh, thanks. Questions?
No questions.
Anybody else in the public push to hear on any issue? Please raise your hand.
My name is Sylvia Galaco, and my husband and I have lived with on Hemlock Lane on Union Avenue. We've been here for 40 years in Roxbury, and we raised our family here and have always been very happy in our community. This is the first time we really have come to really be part of what is going on, because we wanted to hear. Because we're about a mile away, as a crow flies. One of my daughters is really interested in coming back to this area to live. And she's looked at homes on Poets Peak, and she's looked at homes in Hunter's Ridge. But of course, is very anxious and frightened by what is going on. And we don't know how to counsel her, and that's really why we're here this evening. My question to you, to all of you as a council, and I do appreciate your efforts, because I really do believe you're doing very best you can.
Not a chance.
Some people may feel you need to do more, and perhaps that is true. But I think you have good faith for the people of the town. Okay, that's how I... At any rate, my question to you is in 2011...
Sir, sir, they let you at the floor.
I'd talk to myself. I wouldn't talk to nobody.
Please. I'm sorry, Doc.
In 2011, this was voted America's Promise Alliance voted this one of the 100 best communities for young people. That's not a long time ago. My question to you now, in all good conscience, would you agree that this is still the same description for Roxbury? Would you still feel this is a place that young families can come with a good life? I just need to know what you have to say about it and what's going on with this Fenimore issue. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to go first in person, but yeah, I do think it's a great community.
Okay. Ask me why.
I think we have an issue that we've all been very concerned about. Those who think we have or have not been doing the best we can. But regardless, this is very important to all of us, and Roxbury's a great community. I mean, I see it every day. I see a lot of great things every day happening throughout this township. This is a very difficult situation that none of us could ask for, none of us want, and none of us are happy about. We were consumed with this project. So, you know, can I make assurances to your child? No, I can't, of course not. It doesn't mean that I have given up on my municipality. I love Roxbury Township, but I think a little of them is...
Yeah, I'm very concerned, because this is, in my mind, this is Roxbury. I don't want it to become Coxbury. I think that's very irresponsible. That kind of description is very irresponsible, because I think we have a problem, and it has to be addressed, and we all have to work the best we can to get it addressed the best way possible for the health and safety of these people, of all our people. So again, I don't know if she'll come back here. I don't know if I could tell her that, but I'm very proud of this town. I want it to be, to maintain what we've felt, we've come to love and appreciate, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
Tell it and run fast and far.
Anybody else in the public push?
Phil Marocco, Lazarus Drive in Ledgwood. I have two questions. I just have a comment first, and I wasn't going to even mention anything about this, but I'm too concerned about the shutdown that's going to happen this week. And I can't think of any good reason, you know, why we wouldn't want to alert as many people as possible. You know, personally, I'm starting to see a pattern, which is disappointing to me. You know, starting back to when I asked for some of the daycares in town to be notified, that I showed proof, you know, didn't really know what was going on, and there was reluctance to disseminate information.
That's not true, Ken. That's not only untrue, we showed you that we did notify.
You sent someone...
We immediately notified them again, and you were...
It was a month later, Ken. And after about a dozen angry emails.
No.
Yes.
We'll have to disagree a minute ago.
We could disagree, but there seems to be a reluctance to send information out. I don't understand why. This was the DEP's email. Fine, let them send it who they want to send to. But you took that and sent it to your staff. So why not send that to the town? There's people that don't know what's going on here, that live close by. What if something bad were to happen? What if the emissions got really bad? People don't know what to do. Why wouldn't we want to send information out? What's the downside? Besides maybe the DEP asking you not to? Are they?
They picked, where to notify, and Chris says that's not so.
Doesn't the town feel a responsibility to notify the rest of the residents? I feel it's irresponsible not to notify them. If you notice a potential hazard out there... (applause) Don't you think that's irresponsible?
No.
Do you have any other questions, Christopher?
Yes, I do. The stack test report. Nice report. We know that the stack testing was deficient. We know that the stack's been in operation for six months. We don't know what's coming out of it. You hear people come up here and say they're getting sick. I found out something alarming a week ago, having emails back and forth with Ed Putnam, regarding the SO2 release a few weeks ago. And he sent me the information of what's coming out of the top of the stack. And they don't have a continuous monitor. It's been mentioned here.
They have a device.
They have a portable monitor, and they take readings every few hours. And I saw readings coming out of that stack up to 2,000 parts per billion. So they don't shut the scrubber down. The standard is 75 with, over what's coming out of the stack. They focus on the monitors that are dispersed throughout the township. And we know those three monitors don't cover the whole area. I smelled the SO2 for the first time over the weekend. It smelled like all my neighbors had their fireplace on. My lungs were burning in my driveway. The monitors were reading zero. We know this gas bypasses these monitors sometimes. We've seen it. Comes out of the stack, it's hot, it rises, it drops when it cools. Where do we go from here? How long do we have to wait to get this stuff tested? How many more people have to come up here and say they're having health effects? What are you guys doing to advocate that you can get this test done?
Your time's up, but I wanted to take some time to answer that question. This one stack. Is Ellie, do you have enough information?
We have requested, they consider putting a continuous monitor on the stack. So when they're going to do the, I found, you were here. I found out about that they're shutting down the system for maintenance tonight. They're going to be doing some measurements, and they will be putting a continuous monitoring device in at the stack. It was just supposed to be for SO2. The town has requested also H2S, of course. So I believe they're considering adding H2S to the device. And the device will be at the stack itself and have a mechanism that can have a automatic shutdown instead of someone having to rely on peripheral measurements and making a judgment call.
But they don't shut it down now with that?
I'm not going to get into that. I'm not the DEP. I'm the consultant for the town. I can't make their policy. Alls I can do is advise my client what standard of care might be. And you saw my report, you saw what I spoke, was my recommendation, was the bottom line in the report. I said that a stack test should be run following protocol of a similar unit over Warren County with similar situation.
Are they going to do it?
I don't know, but it's in writing, and I gave a justification. And the town, the town agrees with my recommendation, and I didn't give one comment, any edits from anyone on this council.
But that report sitting in this room isn't doing anything. Where are we going with this? What's the knack? What's the action? How are we going to get this out? Get the DEP to actually do the test?
Okay, Mr. Marocco, a little follow-up on that question. We have followed up. I can make a call tomorrow, I guess, to push for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public push to hear? Please raise your hand.
So tomorrow, when this shuts down, the gas is going to, we're going to be exposed more to this now, right? More gas, more H2S? I'm trying to understand. Do we have...
Jim, Mayor, I'll try my best, okay? Typically, they've been pumping out around 80 cubic feet per minute. Let me rephrase that. They've been pumping out about 1,000 cubic feet per minute total, going, part of that is coming from the landfill, and part of it is from the atmosphere. They dilute it so that the mass of the H2S levels can actually be handled by the treatment. In the past, and I don't know what the time is, I suppose we sent the data probably to Chris, they've doubled the pumping. They've gone from a mass removal of 80 pounds an hour, H2S, 80 pounds an hour, to 160 pounds an hour, which is about 110, one ton a day to two tons a day. Their theory is if they overpump, call it, double it up for several days, they're going to release the, they're going to release the pressure, which I haven't seen any way. I'm just telling you, I'm just reiterating what they told me. So they're going to, they try to get as much H2S that's free and available out of landfill in the days leading up to this. They've also monitoring their ventric pressure. I can tell you from doing a lot of landfill work, that's extremely important. You have a high-pressure system, that high-pressure, anyone here probably the fireman understands with the weather, that high-pressure keeps everything down. Low-pressure, that's when the gas will come out, and it's true for everything. So they have been doing it the proper way, and I don't expect, I don't expect that there would be a significant release of gas in the three or four days. I do not expect it. They at least waited at a time where things are under control, there's not, the climate is correct for it, and they do have, all three wells are hooked up now, and they have 14 going today. And about 416 typically coming out of landfill when it was there tonight.
So we were really exposed to more SO2 like the days prior to this?
Don't confuse SO2 with H2S. SO2 is a byproduct of the treatment.
I thought it was taken in the gas and twice the rate and...
There will be no SO2 possibility because the treatment system won't be on. The SO2 only occurred...
No, 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 I don't mean that. I mean previously to this now, this past week.
Yes, yes. And the consequence of that can be SO2 could be going up because you're trying to put more mass through it. And after the trial and balance, there can be some. But I haven't seen any data. I've seen nothing. So I can't give an opinion on something I would look at.
Well, didn't we have like a spike of like 5,000 cubic feet or something recently? Was that monitored right?
That's H2S. The SO2 monitors, and I don't know if Mr. Marocco has had a chance, the SO2 monitors have been fairly consistent. We do get what we call uncharacteristically high readings from the monitors. I think we maybe had a few. I'm not going to give a number of H2S, correct. They go up, and then they immediately plummet our, immediately in a minute.
They immediately plummet, then why do we have all those alerts there? You said it's over an hour last, we told you it's over an hour.
Because if you get 15,000 parts per billion as an anomaly, and it's extended over an hour, it will be...
Oh, and then it has to average in with all the...
Yes, ma'am. Now, our EMOCOT has a way to scrutinize that and to, you know, to actually evaluate those without knowing immediately that it is not indicative of a H2S emission to that extent. And that's what they... to that extent, and that's what they do.
In fact, they've prepared, in fact, at the township's request, EMOCOT has been working on a report to explain these spikes, to try to explain these spikes, and one of the things that they were able to uncover by looking at weeks and weeks and weeks of data is that when you see one of these errant spikes, you'll see the graph will come across like maybe 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, every five minutes, 0, 0, 0, 0, and then all of a sudden, in that one, the next five minute interval, it'll go to 1,000, and in the next five minute interval, it'll say 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, and that's indicative of a false reading. Either some stray gas from an exhaust or just a malfunction in the monitor, okay? Because they're so sensitive. When they compare that to where, let me finish, when they compare that to, there have been times when the mon, when the scrubber has shut down on a landfill, before, to Volvo, they had a problem up there, they had shut the scrubber down. When that occurs, their readings start out 0, 0, then it goes to 5, then it goes to 10, then it goes to 20, then it goes to 30, and maybe it peaks at 100, and then as soon as that scrubber kicks back on, and they're able to, to verify that, or for the results from this, from the landfill, it drops to 80, to 70, to 60, to 50. So you can actually see the H2S increase when the scrubber goes down, and then deplete once the scrubber kicks back in. So it's absolutely clear to our experts that when you see just one of those errant spikes, it's not coming from the landfill.
And may I point out too that I always call DEP when we get a uncharacteristically high reading and ask if there's been any odor complaints, because if you're getting 5,000 parts per billion, you're gonna get odor complaints, and there's no corresponding odor complaints.
I went to deliver pizza on Saturday night, and it smelled by the Walmart, and I called it in.
I had to go back, and again, if you'll look, like, at the last meeting, you can always look at our, on our monitors, and I've also printed out, again, the comparisons to last year at this time as well, too. They're on the informational center, along with all of the alerts and everything that the DEP sent out today as well. So you could look at that compared to where we were last year. You could go on their monitor. I'd have to go back and look at Saturday's data. I can do that, but I can tell you that Saturday evening when I was working, I did have, I did have the monitor on, I don't recall seeing any, but I could go back and take a look.
Yeah, and correspond the two together, but, so, when this shutdown happens tomorrow now, how far should we be about this? Like, or do we have a protocol in place for like an emergency? Are calls gonna go out then, or is it like a siren gonna, like, hit it?
We'll, we'll follow, we'll follow the exact same protocol we established almost, well, several months back in regards to our respite center. Those are, those are all on the website at the different levels.
How do we know if we're not, if we're...
You'll get, you'll get...
If we're being poisoned or not, really?
You'll get an alert. You'll get a, you'll get a notice, a notice that goes up to 100 parts per billion for over an hour that the respite center is open.
Honestly, I almost feel like I don't even want to let my kids stay in school and be in town for this. I'm very nervous.
Well, I would, I would see what, that's, that's your personal, yeah. That's your personal. Thank you, Ms. Longo. Anybody else in the public portion to be heard? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone in the public portion? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you already spoke, we have to do it again later. Yes.
I live at Bell Summit Lane in Suckasana. I have a statement. I know it's been said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. With that understanding, I am still hopeful that there is something that myself or other residents could say that would spur you to immediate and vigorous defense of the people of Roxbury. I was very upset at the last council meeting. I watched then, as in many previous meetings, residents come forward and express the serious concerns they have for the health and safety of their families and this entire community. Carl and Brenda both spoke that needing to move members of their families out of town because of health issues. I'm outraged by this, and we all should be. They are decent people who, through no fault of their own, have been thrown into a horrible situation. You became exasperated with the residents for voicing your discontent and deemed us out of order. What you fail to realize is that people have been coming to you for months, and rather than, as Brenda said, feeling like you have our backs, we feel that you are, that you and your loyalty to Governor Christie are part of the problem. If a private citizen had released poisons into our water and our air, I feel like you would have done everything in your power, used every means at your disposal, to take a full-on assault and bring that, apprehend that criminal and bring him to justice. Yet we are being poisoned daily, and I hear now it's gonna get worse, because of the illegal dumping and blatant disregard of environmental laws by the governor and the New Jersey DEP, and you failed to act. This is why we are so angry. Have you determined that we are expendable and not worth the effort involved to fight this administration? I would also like to take issues with the comments made that only residents in the immediate area are concerned about the landfill. I don't live on Mooney Mountain. I live on Summit Lane at the end of the cul-de-sac. I am literally the last house in Suckasana, and I am very concerned. I also refute your assertion that residents in town know about the landfill. People that I speak with know it is there, but have no idea of the serious threat to your health, to their health and safety that it poses. That's why I am again requesting you send a letter to every resident in town explaining the dangers of hydrogen sulfide and the implications of the NJDEPs refusing to allow soil samples so that we don't know what else we are facing. People aren't aware because you haven't taken the necessary actions to fully inform them. You give us excuses, but not one good reason why you can't send out the letter. My training is as a nurse, so I am well aware that what is happening to residents in close proximity to the landfill is happening to them first. They are our canaries in the coal mine. It won't be long before their issues will be the issues of every resident in town. If you believe, as was stated previously, that as long as it's not in their backyard, people won't care, they need to know it is in every backyard in town. It is your responsibility and your moral duty to inform them. Mr. Bucko, you said at the last meeting, I believe that ethical concerns due to conflict of interest kept you from introducing legislation regarding the landfill last year. I believe that you need to resign as our township attorney, because we need an advocate who is not encumbered by ethical issues. Clearly, you are not able to adequately serve our interests by holding both positions. I'm aware that all of you must be under a great deal of political pressure not to speak out about the landfill. It's time that you realize the governor has left you holding the bag. He has no concern for Roxbury residents, as evidenced by his comment to a resident questioned him, that Roxbury just has to deal with it. He has also, has no concern for you either. You live here, and you're not immune to what's in the air. It affects all of us. He caused this situation and will not even come here, even though we are just a few miles from his home. Is this the person, I think you need to ask yourself, is this the person who deserves your loyalty? I am asking you to stand up for the good people of Roxbury who have done the right thing. They work hard, maintain their homes, pay their taxes, and created the atmosphere that just a couple of years ago led us to being listed as one of the 100 best communities to raise a family. Thanks to Governor Christie, we can no longer claim that distinction.
Thank you.
We're gonna start before 40 minutes around anything. I just want a question. Have you learned the schools of the impending shutdown tomorrow?
I did speak to Dr. Tierney today.
And?
I spoke to Dr. Tierney today, and I let her know that...
Is he gonna send something out?
I did not ask him that, nor did I, I did not talk to him about that.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public portion to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Donna Zimmer, Lawrence Lee in Suckasana. I just wanted to share with you my conversation with the EATSDR. I spoke with, I believe it was Jill as well. She said that they wanted to send the card out to everyone in Roxbury, but because of budget constraints, they couldn't. And she encouraged me to let everyone I know know that they are welcome to call, and that they encourage everyone to call. So I just, I...
I'll follow up with that, but that's not the word, the message.
And she also told me there were two days that the, there were gonna be focus groups on two days, the 25th and 26th of June, and that there would probably, that they, they wouldn't probably be able to have a lot of people in them, therefore, she wanted as many people as possible to call ahead of time and express exactly what's going on in their families, and it didn't matter how far they lived at all. So it's just another reason to try and get the word out to everybody in town, that if they, you know, I'm a nurse too, and my concern is that there's people who are having symptoms that are new as of, you know, whenever they started dumping up there, and they're not putting two and two together, that they're from the gas, not something else, so, you know.
I will call her tomorrow, and I'll let her know what you say, and I'll try and vet it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public portion to be heard? Yes, sir.
Phil May in Lanning. I bought my house a year ago. First time homeowner, I'm 34 years old. I can't believe that you don't tell us what's happening in Lanning, because it's like we're in a different place. We're part of Roxbury Township. That's my investment. I don't have a lot of money. I'm losing equity in that house, very concerned. I don't, it's not because I don't care, it's because there's no way for people to know. You think a Realtor told me what was going on when I bought this house a year ago? No. Okay? So there's obviously a communication breakdown.